Call to order and roll call.
Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Swat.
Here.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Sixta.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the City of Kingman meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is Wednesday, May 14th of 2025. Our first step tonight is the approval of last month's minutes. This was the regular meeting minutes of April 9th, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Can I get a roll call?
Yes, Chair Goss.
Approve.
Vice Chair Swat.
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy.
Approved.
Commissioner Noble.
Approved.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Approved.
Commissioner Sixta.
Approved.
Commissioner Waters.
Approved.
It's been approved.
Thank you. All right, next I have the call to the public. This is for comments from the public. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. This is not where we do comments for the agenda items. So I'm just putting that out here. I do have those papers. Did we get any extra comments? Okay. All right, do we have any comments on anything else? No? All right, I see none. All right, first we'll move to our action items. This, our first one is RZ25-0002. This is the Walupi Edge Rezone. RZ25-0002, zone change of approximately 11.04 acres from R-1-20, single-family residential, 20,000 square feet minimum lot size, to R-1-8, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot minimum lot size to align the boundary to facilitate a future residential subdivision located south of Louise Avenue, north of Southern Avenue, and east of Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, Mojave County APN 322-12-006, applicant McCall Iris Development Services for RSF Partners LLC. Do we have a presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner, sorry.
I'll be presenting RZ25-0002, a rezone for Walupi's Edge subdivision. We have an aerial map here that shows the site and the proposed area of the rezones highlighted in red. It also shows that there's a single-family residential subdivision to the west and mostly vacant land surrounding the majority of the site. Here we have a zoning map that shows the existing zoning of the site. The site zoning was approved in June of 2005 by ordinance number 1485. The existing site zoning is R-120, R-18, and we have commercial zoning in the northwest corner of C2 and C3. And there's a little bit of RO zoning in the northeast corner, sorry. Here we have the general plan map that shows the general plan land use designations for the site. It's primarily medium-density residential with a portion to be rezoned there in between the low-density and medium-density residential. The findings for this rezone, the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the goals of the general plan and any applicable specific plans. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the city and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. The affected site is physically suitable in terms of design, location, shape, size, operating characteristics, and the provisions of public and emergency vehicle access, public services and utilities, fire protection, police protection, potable water, schools, solid waste collection and disposal, storm drainage, wastewater collection treatment and disposal, to ensure that the requested zone designation and the proposed or anticipated uses and/or development will not endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity in which the property is located. The proposal was sent to different intergovernmental agencies and outside agencies, and we received no comments. Public notice was given. We sent a mailing notice on April 22nd of 2025. The site was posted with signs on April 23rd of 2025, and a notice of hearing was published in the Kingman Minor on April 23rd. Three letters of opposition from the public had been received as of the date this presentation was completed, and we've received several other opposition letters since that have been included in a packet you received this evening. Based on the findings contained in the staff report, staff is recommending that RZ25-0002, an application to change the zone of 11.04 acres from R-120 to R-18, is hereby recommended for approval to the mayor and city council. If you have any questions, I also have a couple exhibits attached. This is an exhibit provided by the engineer that provides the legal description for the 11.04 acres to be rezoned. I've also included the proposed subdivision plat, which is at the preliminary plating stage and has not yet been approved. And then an additional exhibit. The area that's being proposed for preliminary plat has all the lot information indicated on it, and you can see that there's still a buffer between the existing subdivision to the west of lots that will eventually be proposed for subdivision plating that will still have the R-120 zoning designation. Any questions?
Does anyone have questions for staff?
Chair Goss, I do. Just to confirm that, could you roll back a few slides, sorry?
Yeah.
Earlier you had color-coded based on the, it was quite a bit back there, based on the,
The general plan?
A little further back, right there.
Yeah.
So are we just talking about the yellow green? Sorry, I'm colorblind.
So the yellow is the R-18 zoning designation. That little area highlighted in red is the area proposed to be rezoned to R-18. And that's just to help align the subdivision edge with the correct zoning.
And the white line there is the boundary of the entire subdivision?
Correct, of the entire site. The proposed subdivision is just a smaller portion of the entire site.
Okay, and the site, the builder intends to honor that R-120 on the left, that slice?
I believe so. There's no proposed plat for that yet.
Got it.
But there is a development agreement in place that was included in your staff report from the original rezoning resolution that zoned the property back in 2005.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just to be clear, the portion in red is the 11 acres?
Correct.
And directly to the west, there are how many R-20,000 square foot lots? How many lots are in there that are proposed to be built there?
There hasn't been a formal proposal made yet.
You just answered that. Okay, so is there any way that that could change without a rezone or anything?
No, they would have to go through a public hearing process for a reason like this.
Okay, and then the other side, the east side, is definitely the R-18, the smaller lots. It already is that.
Correct.
Right? So it already is this, and it already is that. And this is in the middle that they're just trying to address its 11 acres to combine it with the R-18?
Yes, a portion of the proposed subdivision falls within that R-120, but the lots that are being proposed meet the R-18 standards for development, so.
Okay.
It's just to clean up the boundary there.
Just to clean it up, okay. And so it already is the way it is, and this is just a cleanup. It's not like a change.
Correct.
Or whatever. So, and this follows the general plan?
Correct.
For Kingman, okay.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff?
Chair Goss, just following up on that. So the section in red is currently zoned R-120.
Correct. My little bubble in this image didn't perfectly align.
I understand that. I'm just curious about when you're saying it's just a cleanup. It is already R-120, and it will be changed to R-18.
Correct. This exhibit might help a little.
Yes. And would you go to the exhibit, I think it's two after that? Right there. So that's the proposed, that's a proposed outline for what it might look like?
Yes, and that kind of aligns with that development agreement that was included in your staff report.
Can you show me where Sandstone Street is? I think I know where it is, I just want to make sure. Sandstone is the last row of houses built in Rancho?
Yes, so I don't know if you can see my cursor, but I believe that's Sandstone, that my mouse is hovering over now.
Yeah, it is. Okay, so then there would be one, two, three rows of R-120 after that?
Four, it looks like here. The starting, sorry, I can't find.
Is that, is that last one still half-acre lots?
Correct.
And then they would be facing the R-18 lots?
Looks like they would back up to those.
They would back up to it. And you mentioned earlier there would still be a buffer. Was that buffer for Sandstone Street? Or what's the buffer for?
The buffer of R-120 zoning between these proposed lots and the existing development on the other side.
The Sandstone?
Correct, Rancho Santa Fe.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Right, right. Chair, one more thing. I'm just curious about the buffer itself. I mean, a buffer should be a transition between two different densities, right? I mean, but this is basically protecting Rancho Santa Fe with an R, you know, with an R-20, and then it's just dropping off straight down to, you know, an R-8. So why isn't it like a step down? Why isn't the buffer like a 15 or, you know, like some intermediate number instead of just a 20 and then falling off a shelf like that?
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, so back in 2005, when the developer placed a private site, they established the R-120 designation along the western portion of the site. But the applicant is honoring that as the rezone and developing the site. Natural buffer comes out of Rancho Parkway and eating into the R-120 and then stepping down to a higher density. Do you look at requests to the rest of Rancho Santa Fe if it's keeping the same lot sizes?
I guess it's just confusing me because it seems like it's still going to be abrupt. It's just you're moving where the abrupt drop-off happens just further out from Rancho Santa Fe, you know? You're still having that same dynamic inside of this proposed subdivision.
Well, the exhibit, based on where the rezone takes place, it actually bifurcates second row of lots with the proposed subdivision.
So on the exhibit before you, if you were to take that rezone and overlay it, the westerly, the easterly boundary of that rezone would essentially bifurcate or bisect the second row of lots that's coming down in the proposed subdivision. That's the purpose of the cleanup that's before you this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason. All right, I am going to open up us for public discussion. I have some requests in front of me. I'm just gonna go through them. I'm probably going to pronounce your names incorrectly, but you get to come up to the microphone and tell me what it is so that I get it right from then on. Also, that way we can write it down. So I'm gonna start with Mike Ballsley. Awesome, come on up, state your name for us correctly and let us know what you have to say.
Hi, I'm Mike Ballsley, and I live over on Sandstone. And I'm just curious because the whole Rancho Santa Fe development is all set up for higher-end homes, half-acre lots, all of that. Now all of a sudden, we're cramming in all kinds of, you know, 8,000 square foot lots out there. And I mean, a lot of people moved out there because they wanted the open area. And that you have, on the other side of the 40, you have what, 3,000 homes that are going in over there? You have 300 and something over on Walupi. And my concern is, where's all this traffic gonna go? You know, they already told, I checked with people that were doing the building, the road, that's the new off-ramp, is gonna turn on Louise, it's not going behind our house. They said, not at this time. And so that's gonna put a lot of traffic on Louise, a lot of traffic on Southern. It's just not set up for it. And then it comes down to infrastructure with water, electricity. We're already buying electricity out of state. I just don't think people are really realizing that a lot of people move to Kingman for more space and not to be congested like LA, Phoenix, Las Vegas. And it's just like I pulled a flyer from one of the houses for sale over there by us. And one of the things it says, it's basically based off the mountains, subdivision is distinguished by large lots. You know, that's their selling point. Now all of a sudden, all right, here's our selling point. Yeah, you have a large lot, but you can look back and have, you know, how many homes is that, you know? That's gonna be back there. It just seems like it's overdeveloped for that little area for what we need. I see tons of houses for sale out here and more building going on. I just, I'm a little bit lost as to how they think they're gonna fill all of this, you know? And if you lower, if these are gonna be houses for 250,000, what's that do to my property value? You know, if I have a house back there that's 250, and I've paid more than that for mine. So, just kinda curious, you know? It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that, you know, we're trying to build this up, and I understand, you know, development and everything. But I also understand that people still have a right to have a little bit of freedom in their area and that. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Tom Buckle.
I apologize if I repeat something because I'm hard of hearing. So I've had trouble hearing. But my name's Tom Buckle, I live at 2536 Sandstone. My back wall is abutting to what was supposed to be a four-lane street. In 2005, they wanted to rezone the entire 500 and some acres to R-8, and the people of Rancho Santa Fe screamed and hollered and complained because there was no buffer between our half-acre lots and their fifth of an acre. So we finally, everybody agreed, they would put two blocks in of half-acre lots, and then the rest would be fifth of an acre. And everybody seemed to be satisfied. Here we are, years later, they're bringing the same subject back, and now they want to get rid of that buffer zone that we asked for so that we enjoy the dark nights. We enjoy the lack of traffic. And we feel that this is gonna add a tremendous amount of traffic, and we want a buffer zone for noise and everything else which the four-lane street and the two blocks would give us. And that's all we asked for, and we thought it was settled. Here we are, all these years later, we're back to the same thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Barb Carpenter.
Hi, good evening, chairperson, chairperson, chairwoman.
I get it all.
And commissioners. I should have said Barbara Carpenter, I'm sorry. I'm one of the people that sent in a letter because I'm concerned about our infrastructure. Having the smaller lots doesn't make me happy, but all of the traffic concerns me. Louise and Southern all move over into Walupi Mountain. And Walupi Mountain is awful right now. And all this is going to do is exacerbate the problem. I don't understand how we're gonna deal with it. I mean, maybe put an overpass over Louise, that'll get people to 66, I don't know. But we are not prepared for this with our infrastructure. And our hospital, our hospital is not doing very well, and people don't even want to go to it. We're gonna bring more people here, how are they gonna handle it? That's my only concern. You know, I would like, I would seriously like for y'all to consider the fact that we don't have any space for any more people at this point unless we get our act together, and we don't have it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna give this one my best go. Scott K.
It's Scott Klein-Hesling.
Can you give that to me one more time?
Klein-Hesling?
Clyde Testlink.
Klein-S-Link.
Klein-S-Link, got it.
Plus an S.
Okay, thank you.
I'm opposed to this rezoning area out there. Looking at the map, it'd actually make more sense. I think it was Mr. Waters used to step-down buffer zone to go from the half-acre to a little bit smaller, to a little bit smaller, then get to the 8,000 square foot. That makes a heck of a lot more sense to me. With that said, the nearest home that's less than a half-acre is approximately 20, or 2.5 miles from there. I think that you should keep that consistent with the existing zoning out there.
Can you please speak in the microphone? Thank you.
Not only that, it's gonna bring additional crimes, costs for first responders, and resources out there. And especially, and with the roundabouts, that's a different topic. But we have very current, very limited infrastructure out there. The nearest shopping for me is gonna be up at Walmart. There's nothing south I-40. And that's gonna, along with that, there's no public transportation out there either. So that's gonna bring, it's also gonna bring a lot more congestion to the overburdened KRMC, which is, in my opinion, very lacking. It takes months to get an appointment. There's already a 300-plus house development plan for Southern in the county area out there as well. And they're already building another 30 to 40 acres north of Louise out there. That's gonna bring a tremendous amount of traffic to Southern, a tremendous amount of traffic to Louise. Not to mention Walupi Mountain Road. I've only lived in this area for about three years, and the traffic has just got terrible out there. Currently, there was only those two roadways. Plus, they're looking at building an additional 100 homes in between Central and Seneca, 500 in the county area out there off of Southern, and another 500-plus off of Santa Rosa. Where's the businesses to support this? Darnin. Right now, there's only, if you live east of the railroad tracks, there's only two ways to get west of the railroad tracks. I've spoken to dozens, if not hundreds, of people about this development, and everybody's opposed to it that I've talked to. I ask my neighbors if they're gonna come to the meeting, speak before you. They say no. I say, why not? They tell me that basically everything the developers want to do up here is rubber-stamped by you guys. And by, you know, and all I can say is that if you, your family somehow are going to benefit from the rezoning of any of these properties, you need to make that known publicly and recluse yourself from voting on this.
Thank you very much. All right, next I have Wanda Morag.
Monroe.
Monroe.
Yes, that's Wanda Marty Monroe. Yeah, I would like to, I just want to reiterate on what the previous speakers have said, and we definitely agree. And we have a very nice area there. We live at 4387 Gemstone, which is right at the end, right in there. And those homes that are coming so close, we bought that area because we liked the open space. And I'm sure people who are going to be buying here would like more open space. And the smaller lots, you're gonna bring people that we try to get away from, let's put it that way. Because we didn't want a small lot. We don't want garbage out in the street. We don't want people parking junk cars all over the place. And I think a larger buffer zone would be something you should consider. You know, we, I'm not gonna say where I'm from because I was on the city council in California, so I know what you're going through. And if you would please consider a little bit more of a buffer zone in that area and larger lots. Those lots are really small. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all I have from these papers. If anybody else wants to come up and address us, that's okay too. So is there anybody else that wants to? Okay, I've got two. So actually, we can't respond to any of you guys. However, you can come up and let us know how you feel about it. Jason actually does write down some things, and sometimes he can clear that up for you after the fact. But this is just like an information gathering from you guys right now.
Do you mind if I come up?
Go right ahead.
One of the biggest things I have, my name is Vernon Edward Monroe. I live at 4387 Gemstone Avenue, Rancho Santa Fe area. As my wife, last name Monroe, was stating to, okay, now, my biggest question is that Rancho Santa Fe Parkway still going in? As according to your maps that were sent out to the general public, it showed it right up to our property line. And I was wondering if that Rancho Santa Fe Parkway is still viable or if it's not. I know from what I heard, and I've talked to numerous people, that's supposed to be a beltway basically from the interstate to Walupi Mountain Road. I was, you know, with traffic, and it's bad enough now with our off-roaders, but can you imagine the amount of traffic as alluded prior to that situation and that area? I thank you very much for my time and your commitment to trying to improve and to help Kingman. I know it's getting very congested here, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to address the commission? Come on forward and state your name.
My name is Tanner Schrider. I am one of the owners of Rancho Santa Fe, RSF, and I'm also one of the owners of Walupi's Edge Development. Well, I shouldn't say I'm one of the owners, I'm one of the developers that are helping. I'm here to clear up any questions that you guys may have for us. Sorry, I got here a little late today. I was watching on the way here. One of the questions that I do want to address is, yes, we intend to honor the R-120, and we're not gonna change that. That will still be there as a buffer. Another question that was just asked, I believe the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway in the developmental agreement is to be paved is to be paved from Louise to Southern once, I believe, it is 250 home sites are put in place. And that is to be paved by the developers of the future acres. I believe there's a total of 780 acres there. We, what this was, was a boundary cleanup. We had originally gone off the GIS map. And when we got the meets and bounds from the city, it was nowhere near it. And it was very jagged and almost impossible to build a subdivision on that line. That is why we're asking for this rezone to rectify that situation. I'm open to any questions that you guys may have for me also.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Hold on one second. Can we ask questions during this part or do you want me to have him come back up during Commission discussion?
Close the hearing if you want. Other speakers have any questions?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any more comments that need to be made first?
Are we open to ask questions up here?
No. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing then and open it up for Commission discussion and you guys can ask your questions.
Okay. Chair Goss, I don't know the whole history of the subdivision, but could you have asked for R-16? And you elected to go to R-18?
So if it went to R-16, the property would actually be smaller.
No, no, I know that. But I'm just, I'm trying to get into your decision-making. When you, when you, this project was started, did you elect to go to the absolute densest as you could have? Or did you step it up a notch from?
So the R-18 zoning was, has been in place since the developmental agreement, I believe, back in 2005, which was in place by my grandfather and several other owners.
Okay, so it's been that way for quite a while.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so was there any discussion about maybe tapering the density from the 20 to say a lower step until getting to the density?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, and I can address some of that. So it is zoned R-18 that is the smallest that we can go. There is one lot in this subdivision, I believe, that is about 8,100 square foot. The majority of the lots are 9,300 square foot or bigger. There's lots that go all the way up to 17,000 square foot, which is just under a half acre. We, I understand the concerns of everybody here. And I, we didn't want to go down to such a small level that it would affect the other home sites that are next to it. So that's why we decided to go a little bit bigger than 8,000 square foot.
Got it. But if this was originally set up to be allowed in R-16, you would have went for R-16 so it penciled that to a higher value.
No, because I don't believe that is what is needed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that buffer that runs along, I see that other street right there. What is Sandstone, what's the street east of Sandstone? Has that been named yet?
So the street that's east of Sandstone will be the Parkway.
Okay, and east of that?
And then east of that will be the future R-120 subdivision.
So will the houses be facing the, their backyards will be on the Walupi Parkway? And their front yards will be on that new road?
So as this plan sits right now, the homes, all homes would back up to the Parkway and face into the subdivisions.
That makes sense. And also on the other side where it goes to the 18, those half acres that go to the 8,000 square foot, they have their backyards are backing up to each other and they face opposite? So, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my question is, what is the timeframe for this project?
As soon.
When do you expect to start?
As soon as we have a permit. We are, we are working continuously with the city, with Jason and with engineering on getting our permits.
How long does that take?
I would, I would. Jason, maybe you can answer this a little bit better.
Chair, Commissioner Sartesian. They are currently in the review process for their pre-plat. We would anticipate that sometime this summer coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They, I believe, are also in the process of doing some of their final engineering already, as well as some of their engineering studies that would follow with that. My guess would be is they would look to have a final plat sometime before the end of 2025. Which, if that was the case, they would then submit for building permit. They would start with their infrastructure improvements, right away improvements for the site and then start building homes based on market demand.
So when are you going to put a shovel to the dirt? That's what I want to know.
So that I can't, that I can't answer you. I can tell you that timeline.
Is it a year or two?
I would say he could probably be shovel-ready in 18 months to 24 months, just depending on, again, market demand.
This is probably for staff. When is the interchange going to be projected to be finished and functioning?
Chair, Commissioner McCoy. The interchange itself, I believe, is still on schedule. I think it's slightly, maybe a little bit behind. They would like to be further along than where they are today. I do believe it's still on schedule to be sometime end of 2026, 2027, somewhere in that range. My city engineer, we can certainly reach out and get that official answer for you.
So your timeline and the interchange timeline coincide pretty close?
That would be correct.
For your start of construction?
Yes, sir.
And then Rancho Santa Fe Parkway will extend from the interchange through to where?
With this first phase, there was only 150 lots. So the interchange, the Parkway will only go into Louise at this point. And then, once there is a second phase of our subdivision, then we have to run it from Louise south to Southern.
So it's given us an alternative entry exit to the interstate from that kind of a choke point up there right now?
Yes, sir. And I know that was concerns of where traffic is going to go. That's part of the interchange being there. They're going to be able to access that interchange and get into the city more efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions? No? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
Alright, before we get too much into Commission discussion, I just want to let everybody know that we appreciate your comments and we definitely feel for your position. I do want to ask Carl, since we have him here, if he would just give us a quick bit of information on what is the, what is the point of law on this decision? I know that we are able to vote in line with the city plan and if you could just give us a little bit of.
Correct. So as part of the recommending body, you'll make a recommendation of, you know, to approve or deny. This is what's called a legislative function as opposed to when we talk about the plats were more ministerial. So as a legislative function, it is up to the discretion of the P&amp;Z Commission and the Council whether or not to approve based on their legislative policies, ideas, conformance with the state statutes and our city code, our zoning and those sort of things. So I'm not sure if I'm answering exactly what you're looking for. But as long as you feel this is meeting the needs of the community, it meets the general plan, you can make a recommendation to approve or deny that recommendation to the Council.
Great, thank you very much.
Chair Goss, Commission if I can. Just also, the illustrative subdivision plats that are there today, those are for illustrative purposes. They're not to be considered as part of your review this evening. It was really just to help guide the discussion and where the portion of the change of zone does reflect within the subdivision.
Thank you, Jason. Alright. Do we have any discussion amongst ourselves or does anybody want to make a motion?
Just to discuss it really quick. I hear the, I hear a lot of these complaints often up here. You know, I mean, the Rancho Santa Fe subdivision, just my own opinion, it's the people that live there are doing an excellent job being stewards of their neighborhood. You know, they've elected to pay a little more, have a bigger lot and keep it nice. And then to have like these other subdivisions just piggyback off of them to kind of take advantage of it in a weird way, it just seems wrong to me. I mean, and I keep hearing the argument that, well, the person that bought the other lot next to them owns it. They can do whatever they want with it. You know, they can pack a bin like sardines if they want to. But I mean, if somebody's supposed to care, it's supposed to be this board, right? I mean, we've, we've passed this general plan, you know? And I keep seeing amendments pop up over and over again, not this time, but we're, we're putting this sort of change before us just to second guess the, the plan. It, I don't know, it seems like we should, we should stick to the plan in this case. Irrespective of the pretty drawing they have there, the potential plat, they should just redraw it honoring what we agreed to in the 2020 plat. It's the least we could do. It sounds like regardless, they're still going to have these tiny lots next to their beautiful subdivision eventually. I would like to see it blend a little more, but it seems like we didn't think of that a few years back. But anyway, that's just the trend I see. Again, the term rubber stamp was used earlier. I agree. I think a lot of this, this development is just being rubber stamped. It's, everybody's pushing for it because this new freeway, it seems like we're just desperate to pack in as many people as possible in our community despite the fact that people are moving here because they're sick of that sort of growth model from the 1950s in California. So I don't know, we'll see what happens with it, but that's my own take. So thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd like to say something. I believe, I believe in our staff and I believe in the people up here are very committed to this community and in to Kingman and plan development. I don't believe it's stuffing people into sardines. I believe people are being very careful about what they're doing. We're here considering the community, what they have to say and what the developer is doing. That's what I am doing here. And so I think that matters and it shows that we care. And people are coming here no matter what. So if we work together to get a plan development such as this, then I think it's a boon to Kingman. I think this is what we need, is to have people develop plans. The general plan is just a plan. So it's always going to be added to, it's always going to get bigger. That's, that's the way it works. So you don't stick to the smallness. They're going to come anyway, so why not plan it and do what you can to be involved in planning it and having it develop like this? That's my take on it.
Chair Goss, we could, we could stick with the plan. Or we can, you know, just let things slide to allow development. I think the problem is that, the problem is that we're not, we're choosing quantity over quality. You know, it seems like we're desperate to get a new coffee house or whatever, or these metrics to get our city to grow into something that we might not want, you know? Like, how many people do you know that have moved in a place like Rancho Santa Fe to get away from like a Phoenix or Vegas or Southern California, you know? I mean, before we metastasize into some sort of like tumor that we all hopefully make enough money to where we can move away from again, maybe we should stop and think about whether or not we want to grow. I had this discussion with staff not too long ago. Arizona, believe it or not, isn't a big place. If you look at the map and deduct all of the state land, BLM, all the federal land, we're actually a small state and we're treating it like it's the wide open frontier and trying to pack people into here and become yet another Phoenix despite all of our water problems and traffic problems, which everybody here I'm sure knows about. So these, these aren't minor issues. They keep getting swept under the rug, I think. And anyway, I'm glad people have come out here and I just hope that we, we consider maybe sticking with the plan that we put before the people not too long ago. I mean, if, if it doesn't matter and we're just going to keep amending these general plans, then why even have them? Why not just have random decisions every single time we meet here whenever it favors a developer? Anyway, that's my opinion, thank you.
Chair Goss, Commission if I can. We are not amending the general plan this evening. It is a rezone that's being proposed that's consistent with the general plan. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on the record.
Yeah, thank you. And Chair Goss, it's just, I've been told that I need to understand how the general plan works. What I'm saying is that since we've, you know, passed it, we've had meeting after meeting where we're changing it. And now we're just disregarding it apparently here, even though we've specified which portion of this property should be R-120. So that's, that's where I'm coming from, thank you.
Can I say something? I don't take this lightly. And I'm not, when you say "we," I, I am not doing that. You know, I am not taking it lightly. I am not shoving it together. I'm very intentional. And so I, I don't agree with you.
Chair Goss, yeah, I'm trying to avoid personal prominence and talk about ideas. So if we do disagree, it doesn't matter to me. We're, we're going to hopefully honestly discuss the debate. Thank you.
I will say that I think that the general plan does allow for pro-development, for sure. It allows for infilling the spaces that we have and trying to increase the amount of, you know, people and places that we have to live and work and buy things here in Kingman. And so when that was approved, it makes it a little bit more difficult to try to keep the town small because helping the town grow is more in line with the general plan. And so it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily changing the general plan. It's that the plan that was put in place was for growth. And so we'd have to change the general plan to keep it small. That would be the plan of our town would be to decrease infill, which it isn't at the moment. Which makes it a little bit tricky to say things like this shouldn't go forward because these things are in line with the general plan the way it is written now. And so trying to change that and keep things smaller is actually what would be changing the general plan.
Chair Goss, I think there's a misunderstanding. All I'm saying is there's a hard line on the map saying that you shouldn't have R-18. You should have R-120. I'm saying we hold to that in this case. That's all I'm saying, you know? Instead of yet again deferring to developers who want to cram people into these developments, I say we hold to the general plan and let them redraw their plat and just figure it out themselves.
So I think when you're saying general plan, you mean the plan that was made for this area, not the general plan for Kingman?
Yeah, if we go back a few slides, you'll see the slide where there's a demarcation between the R-120 and the R-18. And basically, we're talking about taking a sliver of the area that was, that was allocated to the R-120, stripping it off and putting, making that R-18. That, so in other words, we're just not sticking to the plan. We have a developer that has a plat that wants to jam as many people into it as possible in this little area. And it didn't work, so they're trying to take a sliver off of the R-120. So what I'm saying is that we just don't do that. We just make them figure it out. Redraw their roads a little, you know? Maybe make fewer roads that are a little wider and then make the lots fill in the way they will. Maybe it'll end up being R-110 or something, I don't know. They can figure it out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair Goss, I, and Commissioners, just a few thoughts as I've listened to the people who've come tonight. I used to live on Sandstone Street when we first moved here, backing up. And I used to walk with the coyote, and there were coyotes out in the desert and I loved walking out there. And then we moved to Southern Vista and I'd walk in the desert there. And it seems that just the natural state of things is that development happens. And that's, we're all here for different purposes. Some of us are here raising families, some of us have jobs that we have to do, some of us are retired. And we, and because we have, we're at different stages in life, we all have different values. But we also share values. And the value that I see that we share is interest in Kingman and an interest to keep Kingman nice. And a lot of us are working towards that. We're working towards recruiting more physicians and good. recruiting more physicians and good nurses so that there can be good medical care here. We're working towards doing a good job on the chairs that we sit on, even though we have different values. And I think that even though we may all disagree with each other at the end of the night, I see a lot of positive in that.
Thank you, Jen. All right, you guys have been very quiet.
I'd just like to say that in my heart, I really disagree with this. But if this, the way this thing is set up, I, I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it. You could vote to deny, but I think it's going to be overturned. And, you know, the guidelines we have to follow doesn't, doesn't really leave us a lot of room to do a whole lot. That's, that's just my thought on it.
Can I ask Mr. Schrider a question?
Sure.
To satisfy my curiosity, if this remained R18, you said it couldn't be developed because of, why?
The, the way, it could still be developed. It would not be a clean cut line. It is a jagged line that moves west and east, back and forth. So where we would have the boundaries of half acres up to R18, that means half of someone's half acre backyard would back up to half of someone's R18 yard where they'd be looking into each other's yards, side, from side to side instead of back to back.
Can you put the slide up that shows the proposed subdivision? Okay, that one?
Yes, sir.
You know, if I'm looking at this in the right way, that sandstone right there?
That is a drainage wash.
Okay, that's strange. Is that sandstone? Where is sandstone on this map?
Just to the east, just to the west.
That's the parkway.
Okay, sandstone is where?
It's this, it's the straight line that goes down right to the right of that squiggle. So where you had the pointer on the squiggle, go right, right there, right up and down, right there.
Okay. Oh, right there.
Yeah, there you go. You got it.
So what's the, these, these are all R120s?
Yes, sir. We still have two full blocks of the R120.
And the depth of those would be about what?
I would believe if they're anything like gemstones, they're going to be about 125 by 175.
So you're 500 feet away from the existing sandstone R120 here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have more discussion? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve RZ25-00.
Can you lead a little bit further? I don't think they can hear you.
0002, Wallapia rezone.
A second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss, approve. Vice Chair Swop?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Sixta?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Deny.
It's been approved.
Thank you. All right, next we have Z0250003. Let me give people a minute to leave if that's what they're looking to do. Yeah, it's just if I keep talking, nobody can hear me, so I'm just giving them a second. All right, let's move on to, I think it's a zero, it could be an O, Z0250003, Zone Text Amendment Temporary Signs Political Sign Update. This is a city-initiated zone text amendment to the City of Kingman zoning code, section 4-90-070, standards for temporary signs. Specifically, the amendment expands the standard for temporary signs to include additional development standards and clarify regarding political signage placement. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Goss and Commissioners. Before you this evening is a proposed zoning code text amendment regarding the addition of political signage requirements to the standards for temporary signage. This is zoning case zero, excuse me, Z0, ZO, 25-0003. In 2021, the current zoning code was adopted, at which time the only reference to political signage in Arizona Revised Statute 16-1019 was a small end note at the bottom of a table. In an effort to expand upon and clarify the regulations surrounding political signage, staff reviewed several other jurisdictions throughout Arizona and how they implemented signage regulations for those political signs. The proposed expansion of section 4-9.070 will provide candidates and other political campaigns additional information regarding the state regulation and how the city's zoning code for temporary signage applies to that political signage. Staff does recommend the text amendment be recommended to city council for approval. As you can see here, I mentioned that single reference to ARS 16-1019 being an end note at the bottom of this table, that very small yellow box up there, is the only reference we have to state statute in the current zoning code. The review of other Arizona jurisdictions included a variety of towns and cities, but we found that Phoenix, Chandler, and Paradise Valley all had robust, albeit varying, political signage standards. These examples demonstrated how the state statute could be upheld while also upholding the city's own individual zoning codes for temporary signage. Based on these examples and the City of Kingman's unique needs and our unique character here, the proposed amendment incorporated details regarding defining traffic hazards, expanding the sign-free zone, which council originally approved in December of 2011, enforcement of temporary sign code, and enhanced marketing to the candidates and other political campaigns. The proposed amendment would amend section 4-90.070 by adding section 4-90.070.D. This would give additional clarity to those candidates regarding the political signage and the rules surrounding them. You can see the proposed amendment here in red, along with proposed addition of the site visibility triangle diagram, which is part of the definition of safety hazards in. So in conclusion, the proposed amendment would update the city's zoning code, provide additional guidance to candidates, as previously discussed, and is supported by the findings in the staff report and the goals of the general plan. A public notice was issued for this meeting and printed in the Kingman Minor on April 23rd this year. To date, we have had no agency or other outside public comments received regarding this item. Based on the findings in the staff report, staff is recommending that the commission recommend Z025-0003 for approval to the city council. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I do. So how is this going to change? This is just changing terms inside what the code is for signs? That's what we're doing? So is it going to change how signs are put up and taken down, or how big they are and all that kind of stuff?
Commissioner Goss and, and Commissioner Sixta, the state statute has regulations around political signage specific that says we must allow political signage within the city's right-of-way, provided it meets certain standards. And that is state statute. It's based on size. It's based on certain content on that, you know, it has to have contact information for the campaign. So this is only for regulation within the city right-of-way. A private business or a private homeowner still has to adhere to temporary signage standards, but they are more than welcome to place political signage on their property, adhering to those standards. Typically, temporary signage in, in a, in a regular sign world is not allowed in the city right-of-way. So it, it allows for it under certain parameters and conditions, and this addition is clarifying that to make sure everyone understands those regulations. Thank you.
Chair Goss, sorry, I, I thought, I thought outside that there were certain streets in town, in town. I, I remember doing a campaign years ago. Has that changed at all, or is that part of this project, like updating which, which thoroughfares or whatever receive?
You're correct, Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Waters. There is what, as I mentioned, in December 2011, council passed what's called the sign-free zone. And this is allowed by state statute for political signs, where we can say designated corridors are due to tourism, due to, you know, hotel zone, other entertainment districts that might exist, or aesthetics. We can say, these are the areas in which we do not want this signage to be there. And that allows us to deal with the proliferation that's been happening of that visual blight. So you are correct. There is a map. It is from, it comes down Stockton Hill. I believe it starts at approximately northern, comes down Stockton Hill to Andy Devine, comes down Andy Devine currently from Michael Street, all the way down to Grandview, and then it goes from Wallapii, from Andy Devine to the city limits. One thing I mentioned is a recommendation for amending that and simply extending it from, on, on Andy Devine, from Michael Street, all the way to the city limit in order to help us protect our, our Route 66. That is a resolution that will be going before the city council on June 3rd, when this items moves forward as well. They'll be paired together.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff?
I have one, if I may. The last election cycle, I noticed a lot of political signs affixed to railings that, that's being eliminated on page 53, number eight, says they won't be allowed any longer.
Correct. Temporary signs, regardless of, of their nature, whether political or not, temporary signs are not allowed to be affixed to fencing or things like that.
Is that new, or they never have been allowed?
They never have been allowed.
Just wasn't enforced at the time?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
So let me get this straight. Just for instance, at the corner of Stockton Hill and Airway, right there on the Cracker Barrel?
Yes.
Chain link fence that's there, which continues down the street to where you, to where I, you know, I say you could turn into Wally World.
Yes.
Right there, okay? All those signs that pop up there, you know, during the election cycle, are, are we saying going forward, that's not going to be allowed?
Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Sarkisian, you are correct. No matter the nature of the sign, whatever its content is, placing signs on those fences are, is not permitted under the temporary sign standards.
Another spot I can think of is, right there on Gordon, where the, the end of the Safeway parking lot is, there's a, a flood channel there. A lot of signs get put up there on that railing. Another spot I can think of is in front of, what is it, Planet, Planet Fitness, same type of thing. There, there's an aluminum railing in there, and I noticed a lot of signs get attached there. So who's going to, who's going to, if a sign pops up there, what's going to, what's, what's going to happen?
Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Sarkisian, there is an effort being put forward by our Neighborhood Services Division, of which at the May 20th city council meeting, we'll be giving a presentation next week all about temporary signs in working to educate the public on what is a temporary sign, what are the acceptable forms and styles of temporary signs, and where are they allowed? So we'll be working on an education campaign, provided city council gives us that, that green light, and we'll be working to start that in June to educate the businesses and the community on acceptable signage and acceptable placement.
You didn't answer my question. I asked you.
I'm sorry.
What, what are you going to do about it if a sign gets put up over there? Or is it going to be taken down? Somebody reports and said, hey, there's a bunch of signs put up on the corner of Airway and Stockton Hill, right there by the Cracker Barrel?
So we have the Neighborhood Services Division, our code enforcement officers, who will respond to those complaints and make contact with the property owner. We do have the opportunity, and I do know that the Cracker Barrel property specifically has signed, I believe it's a release or a waiver, an agreement, that allows us to enter, the code enforcement officer to enter their property and remove those signs for them. Now, not every business has done that, so we would rely upon contacting the business, informing them of the violation, requesting the remediation. And should that not happen, then, then it moves down that enforcement road of notice of violation and so forth.
So the corner of Andy and Stockton Hill, right there by the Walgreens, is that fair game going forward for political signs, right there on that corner?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean by fair game.
Is, or is signage going to be allowed on that intersection corner?
Based on the rules of political signage, we would be allowing them to place political signage within the right-of-way, provided they meet the, the standards of that sign, and that they do, they do not violate the site visibility triangle or pose any other hazard.
Okay.
There are also time restrictions, I should point out, when it comes to political signage, per state statute. Political signage may only be placed 71 days prior to the election, and it must be removed 15 days following the election.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I don't have any problem with that.
That allows us another.
I was just, I'm just trying to touch on these, what I call rogue areas in the city, like that spot where I said, by Walmart, where you come out of Walmart's parking lot and you're looking north, and there's a chain link fence there. It's just inundated.
Yes.
With signage, every political cycle that we have.
Yes.
Okay?
That would be, it's not permitted for any type of sign on that, on that fencing. And please let me back up for a moment. I apologize. I misspoke. At the Andy Devine, Wallapii, Stockton Hill Road intersection, that is the intersection, one of the main intersections on the sign-free zone. So please let me take that back. They would not be allowed to put political signage in the right-of-way at that intersection.
Okay, so going forward in this next political or election cycle that we're going to have, I'm not going to expect to see any signage there on that corner around Walgreens.
There should not be. There will be, there will be enforcement.
That's a very popular spot in Kingman for signage.
It'll be illegal if it's there.
Correct. It is part of that. That intersection is the, part of the sign-free zone.
And it currently has all, it has been for years.
It, that has originally been in the sign-free zone from, to the original passing in 2000.
But it's never been enforced, apparently.
Well, Sarkisian, we're going to make you the one who's going to be calling. This is your new job.
No, don't call me.
We'll give you some wire cutters.
But you got stuff on the books, or you got laws or whatever, and it's not being enforced. What's going to change about that? Just because you say you have some community service now that's going to address this problem, or what?
That is the goal of the Neighborhood Services Division. Again, with the upcoming campaign, where our goal is to be educating the Again, with the upcoming campaign, where our goal is to be educating the community and the business community and any potential candidates in the future, that this is a, a serious matter for the city, that they take that seriously, and this is what's allowed, this is where it's allowed. And then moving forward, ideally, people will be well-versed in that prior to the campaign-election cycle beginning.
Hmm, this is gonna be interesting to see how this, this plays out. I'll, I'll, I'll just be standing by, tuned in on this, for sure.
Understood.
Because if you haven't done anything, you'd spit on the books or whatever for the last few years, and there's nobody doing anything about it, I don't, I really don't see where it's gonna change overnight.
Understood.
That's all I gotta say.
Two questions, if I may.
Okay.
Is this a complaint-driven enforcement? Or is it going to be proactive on the city's part, that they're actually going to stop, pick up signs, call them and say, come get them, or we're gonna destroy them?
So it's gonna be two-pronged. Um, in the presentation next week, I will have a map available, uh, that will show you the proactive enforcement zone. It not only includes the sign-free zone that is, uh, allowed by state statute. We're overlaying, uh, that with some additional major corridors of the city. And these proactive zones are gonna be for temporary signs, not just political signs. And also the weed embatement program that has been underway since last month. Um, so that's a proactive enforcement zone. We currently only have two Neighborhood Services officers, and this is a lot of area to cover. Um, so that is the proactive zone. We recognize those are major corridors, major tourism corridors, and we wanna actively spend time keeping those clean, keeping our, our corridors that everybody comes here, drives through. However, there are absolutely complaint-based as well. Should something come up and we get a phone call, they'll, from Ninth Street to Grandview, includes all of those streets as well.
So all the advertising banners at the high school are technically not allowed?
My understanding is that the school district falls under a different.
Those are donations.
That is correct. Commissioner McCoy, Chair Goss. Uh, the school district, the city does not have any purview or ability to regulate any of their signage, their banners that they put on their fences, uh, any of the development that occurs with any of the schools, and that would be with any of the state-funded. So even charter schools that receive state funding, the city does not have any ability to regulate that type of signage.
Any more questions?
Uh, yeah, Chair Goss, I have a question. Um, regarding these, regarding the, your research, did, did you have any other communities reaching out to you about, or, or giving some feedback on like, the restriction, the restrictions on these signs causing it to favor candidates that can afford, like, billboards? You know, like putting their ads on billboards. For example, there was, there was one, if you went out of downtown, there was the LED billboard, which was running some, you know, pro-Democrat, um, you know, candidacy of ads there. Like, did you receive any feedback from any of the communities, or any concerns about that? Like, limiting the ability of people just to go out and stake signs pretty much wherever they want to on the main thoroughfare?
No, and based on the state statute, they may take their campaign funds and buy a billboard. That is, uh, up, up to them and how they choose to campaign and spread those funds around. State statute does limit us in saying, in a very narrow way, you have to allow at least this. It doesn't preclude us from the temporary sign enforcement, but if someone wants to spend their money on a, a private billboard and, and pays that fee, that is how they choose to spend their funds. Um, the other cities did not take that into consideration.
Yeah, well, I know, as Chair of a bond initiative years ago, and some of the exact locations that, uh, Commissioner Sarkisian was mentioning, I've, I've, I know I've done my part to kinda graffiti the area, so. I share, I share some concerns of our enforcement. I'm not sure how you're gonna rein it in, but I support the city in cleaning up the language, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, I see none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, this is, um, requiring a, um, public hearing, so I need to open this up for discussion with the public. If anybody there has anything to say, except for Claudia, feel free to come up. That's my daughter, and she's only 12. All right, I see none, so I'm gonna close public comment and open it up for commission discussion.
I'm all in favor of regulating signs. And this is a baby step, but it's a start, so.
All right, do we have any motion to put forward?
I would make a motion to approve 2025-0003, Zone Text Amendment Temporary Signs and Political Signs.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Goss?
Approve.
Vice Chair Swop?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Sixta?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Approve.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have any reports from staff?
No reports this evening. As it was mentioned already, at the next council meeting, we will do, be doing a presentation that specifically addresses temporary signage. Uh, in addition to that, we'll also be doing a presentation on, uh, some legislation that's forthcoming, uh, that does impact how pre-plats and final plats will be processed, uh, in the near future. Uh, once that presentation is given to the council, I'll be bringing that back to give it to the commission at the next commission meeting as well.
Great, thank you so much, Jason. All right, next we have, um, announcements from commission members. This is limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendances at conferences and seminars. Do we have any announcements?
I will be, um, away for the July meeting, so if we could do that presentation before or after the July meeting, I would love to be here if possible. And I'm also curious if, um, if it, it might be interesting to receive some information about how the city plans to address the traffic coming from east over to the west. As a, a lot of people noted today, there's a lot of traffic backup. I don't know if we might be able to have a report on that, or maybe I just don't know, and everyone else does.
Certainly, Chair Goss, Commissioner Swop. We can certainly have our city engineer come in. We can prepare a presentation that shows you the overall master plan for our traffic, our infrastructure plan for traffic and transportation, and then, uh, kind of tie that in with some of the subdivisions that are forthcoming, uh, along with the improvements that they would be making that help make some of those connections.
Yeah, that would be really interesting and helpful.
That would probably hit around July, if that's the case, given that we only meet once a month. Would you prefer August?
Yeah, it, it'd be difficult for me to zoom in for that.
Okay, so, i- if we can get it on the June agenda, we will. If not, we'll, we'll plan for the August, so that way your presence is available for it.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up with, um, some comment that Commissioner Swop made. Is there any plans in the near future that you know of? Or any talk about making a dedicated right-turn lane at Andy and Walupai? Right there on the, right there on the corner of the dambar. Getting back to what Chairman Swop said, Chairperson Swop said about the, the traffic volume there on Walupai. Uh, it seems like that's starting to become a problem. You can either go straight or you can turn. And probably nine times out of 10 that I use that intersection, somebody is always just sitting in that right lane. And they just plan to go straight, which backs all that traffic up, um, on Walupai. You know, I've seen it packed, packed, uh, you know, backed up past the gassing grub. Has anybody ever given any thought to making some kind of a adjustment there with that situation?
Chairperson Goss, uh, and Commissioner Sarkisian. Uh, if I'm picturing it correctly, we're talking at the dambar, uh, Andy Devine and Walupai Mountain Road.
Right.
Uh, I do believe there was discussion in regards to doing a dedicated right turn, uh, extending from what would have been just past Gassing Grub. There's a proposed Starbucks in that general vicinity, uh, that would then lead to the Andy Devine area. Uh, there are complications in regards to some drainages that are there, as well as, if I remember correctly, some overhead, uh, telco or power lines. And that was one of the things that was impacting whether or not we can get the right turn or dedicated right turn there. I will follow up with city engineer and bring that back to you.
Yeah, I don't really, you know, the ideal.
We should probably, we're getting kind of a discussion, and we could probably have that when he brings a report back. This is just announcements or requests.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Let's just be butting in.
I didn't mean to go off topic, but since, you know, I just kinda segued way into it with, uh, what she said, so. That really needs to be looked at, though.
Uh, Chair Goss, I would like to make an announcement. I would announce my interest at this year's Arizona Planning Conference. Um, I would, I'm very interested in the details on, on where it'll be. I know it's a little early, so. I announced that I'm interested in it, so if you could provide information, thank you.
I can help you with that, too. It's online.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Well, you brought it up.
I did, I did bring it up. Yeah, okay, I will, I will add to that, though. Um, if we could get a little bit more heads-up than we have in years past about whether or not, um, the, um, planning department is gonna send commissioners and how many commissioners they wanna send, I think it would help for planning, um, who can go and how many people are gonna go, um, and things like that. So, as soon as we could get information on that, that would probably be helpful. But, does anybody else have anything? No? All right, then I will adjourn then.
No, you, uh, you didn't ask about asking staff if they, we wanted to ask them to bring something?
Oh, everybody else was going to, sorry. We're open again. Can, um, we have more updates from staff about anything?
Yeah, I'd like to have staff bring us a presentation and have discussion on the site triangle ordinances, about the size, dimensions, what's allowed, what's not, locations, limitations. A general discussion of what they are and can they be modified.
Chair Goss, Commissioner McCoy.
And I'm in no hurry, in the next couple, three months is fine.
Certainly, just, just for clarification for the agenda and for our minutes, this is in regards to request for future reports and updates, item number six. Okay, just wanted to read that into the record, so we have that.
Great. All right, do we have any more? No? No? All right, we're adjourned then.